It's a call to order. The regular meeting, November 5th, 2018. The time is 5:23. Please join me in the pledge allegiance, followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I pray we will bring back leaders who have integrity, people like our founding fathers, principled decision-makers. Then the city will be an honorable and just, the city and the state will be an honorable and just model of ethics, trustworthy, and strong. Declare godly governance, financial stability, wise stewardship of resources, and increasing public trust. Lord God, we thank and praise you for your word and your guidance. We ask for your word to force out the spirits of pride, self-centeredness, hate, rage, bitterness, resentment, strife, and misplaced hostility, and all forms of anger that have entered our nation. We pray for your protective hand to shield further death and destruction of our churches and faith organization. Protect wisdom, honor for the Goodyear police and fire, and the men and women serving around the world. In your name, amen. We are all present, and tonight we have two communication items. The first one, 4.1, is to present the graduates of the Fall '28 Community Emergency Response Team. Julie Serpopolis, emergency manager, to present. Welcome.
Mayor, Council? The Community Emergency Response Team, CERT, program educates volunteers about disasters, preparedness for hazards that may impact their area, and trains them in basic disaster response skills, such as fire safety, light search and rescue, team organization, and disaster medical operations. CERT offers a consistent, nationwide approach to volunteer training and organization that professional responders can rely on during disaster situations. This allows them to focus on more complex tasks. Those through CERT, the capabilities to prepare for, respond to, and recover from disaster is built and enhanced. This year, we went through the roster, refreshed our membership like we did last year once again. And I'm happy to say that with tonight's 16 graduates, two of which are currently present, we now have a total of 96 active CERT members within the community.
That's great.
Without any further delay, I'd like to read the names into the record. And the two individuals that are here, I'd like to start with them. If Myra Bailey and Robert Gross would be so kind as to join me up here. Also graduating, but unfortunately unable to, Tim is Tiffany Barnhart, Roland Basili, Brian Cherfkowski, Karen Cherfkowski. See, there are names that are more difficult to pronounce than mine.
[laughing]
Albert Kusick, Joanna Jones, Kathleen Pattegwin, Philip Salz, Mary Ellen Stoffly, Kristin Ziprick, Josh Zobel, and Jocelyn Woschacki. I hope I got that right. So if we could take a moment maybe to take a picture with council of your two CERT members that are here, I thank you.
And before we do, thank you very much. We have two council members that are going to make comments and remarks. So we have Councilman Hampton first. Oh. Vice Mayor, sorry.
That's okay.
Vice Mayor Campbell.
Well, I want to congratulate both of you to complete the course. I too am a CERT graduate. I went through CERT before I was ever on council, and I really enjoyed it. But we're counting on you to help us throughout the city if we have a natural disaster or we have an emergency where we need your help. And we know you'll be ready to step in and do what you've been trained to do. So thank you so very much. And thank you for your outreach to the rest of the community so that we can have even more graduates.
Councilmember Kano.
Well, I'm commenting to represent this side of the dais, but I just want to say I appreciate the commitment of time that you have invested into your community by going through this training. It's a representation of your service to your fellow neighbors, and that's the greatest, really, sacrifice that can be done. I hope that you're not called into service, but should you be, it's very comforting to know that there are well-trained residents here that have those necessary skills. And thank you for your service, and be sure to pass that along to those members who weren't able to come tonight.
So now it's picture time. So we're going to change this from now on. We're going to the front of the dais. So you'll have to hustle a little bit, all right? So everybody at the front of the dais for your picture, please.
And while you're getting ready for the photo, I should just point out that CERT has become extremely multifaceted. This weekend alone, there were CERT volunteers participating in the smoke alarm installation in historic Goodyear. So they are volunteering for non-emergency goodwill work as well in the city of Goodyear, and they should be commended for that.
Please?
Please. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I want the girls' side and the boys' side.
Yeah, I like that idea.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
All right, we'll go to 4.2 as a presentation on November 11th, Veterans Day Tribute Event at the Goodyear Ballpark. Mike Vietto, Recreation Superintendent, presenting. Welcome, Mike.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Thank you for the opportunity to come before you tonight. We are very excited to invite you and the entire community out to our Veterans Day Tribute Events. This event will take place on November 11th from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. over at the Goodyear Ballpark. This is a fantastic event. We love this event every year because it pays tribute to the tremendous sacrifices that the men and women in our military make each day. And so this is just a pause for us in the community to say thank you to all those veterans who are out there serving. We have a bunch of great activities planned for the day. We have a wonderful partnership with Luke Air Force Base. And so Brigadier General Todd Canterbury is going to be giving the keynote speech this year. And we also have a very, a couple of very special guests. A couple of F-16s are going to give us a wave as they fly by.
Oh, nice.
The event this year. So we're super excited for the flyover. It's always fun for everybody to see that and just see the sheer power of those F-16s as they fly by. But we'll have the patriotic-themed youth activities. So we'll have West Star Choir out there and Anderson Institute singing patriotic songs. We'll have our flag garden out. So if anybody wants to come out and plant a flag in tribute to our veterans, we'll have that going again. So it's going to be a fantastic day. We ordered up 78 degrees and sunny this year. So it's going to be a wonderful event, and we hope to have you all out.
Well, I'm going to make a comment on this. My husband was presented this week as the Veteran of the Year for Pebble Creek. And it was interesting because I don't think he even thought about that. And he was sort of taken back that he was. But it is very meaningful of your service. And so for us to all attend this and show respect and honor to them, it does mean a great deal to him. So we're looking forward to it. It sounds like a nice day.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
All right. Let's go right on to the consent agenda then. To approve the consent agenda, will the city clerk please read consent agenda items 6.1 through 6.2 by three, by title only, please?
6.1, approval of minutes. 6.2, adopt resolution number 2018-1877, declaring as a public record that certain document filed with the city clerk entitled amendments to section 11-1-34 fireworks of Chapter 11 offenses of the Goodyear City Code. To adopt ordinance number 2018-1390, amending and replacing section 11-1-34 fireworks of Chapter 11 offenses of the Goodyear City Code in providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances and codes, corrections, severability, and an effective date. 6.3, approve fiscal year 2019 budget transfers.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does anyone in the audience want to speak? All right, Council. Can I have a motion a second to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell. A second for Councilmember Pizzillo. Roll call vote, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stepp?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right. I've been asked to tell you just to refrain from asking questions until there's a motion on the table, on the following, on the business. 7.1 is to approve the budget transfers for one-time contract services and equipment to address development activity. Our presenter tonight will be Rebecca Zuck, our engineering director. Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council. I'm here this evening on behalf of several departments requesting the approval of a budget transfer in the amount of $1,131,200. The funding is needed to address increased development activity in the areas of planning, building, engineering, water and sanitation, and GIS. All of the funds that we are cresting this evening are for one-time assistance through the end of the fiscal year. Council is aware that development continuum has been working very hard over the past several years to improve our processes. It was critical for us to work with staff to ensure that we were providing the very best for our customers while managing our workload. While doing so, we were able to identify capacity and ultimately absorb some of the increased activity over the past few years. During that time, we requested some assistance, and council was in support of those requests. This allowed staff and the various contract personnel to be able to provide excellent customer service to our customers in a good timeframe. However, in the past six to 12 months, the workload has steadily increased, and much more so in the past few months. As council is aware, in just the last couple of months, we've had a number of high-profile projects come to the city, and many more are working with our internal team headed by economic development. I remember when I first started, in the first couple of years, we would have 20 different companies come and talk to us, and only one might come to fruition. Now it seems that every single company that comes and talks to us is coming forward, which is wonderful and very exciting for us. However, we are finding it more and more difficult for us to meet the needs of our customers. With that said, we are requesting funds to shore up the areas of preliminary, high-level plan review and coordination. This is to support our managers in planning and engineering. We have approximately 10 meetings per week, some with just 24 hours' notice to respond to our economic development customers. We are, it's necessary for us to do research about zoning, utilities, turnaround times, and really prepare for those visitors that come in to talk to us about a potential project here in Goodyear. We are requesting funds for senior-level plan review professionals to attend meetings and conduct high-level plan review and coordination. On the inspection side, we're requesting funds to help with both horizontal and vertical construction for both residential and commercial projects. It is very important for our team members to be available on-site for guidance and oversight during the construction process. In addition, we also are requesting assistance for the front counter. Every plan that we have, whether it's planning, engineering, or building, comes through the front counter and is touched several times as it goes in and out. In addition, they also issue permits, take payments, and work with our customers both on the phone and in person. And ultimately, they represent the entire development continuum and the city. Finally, internal downstream customers of ours are also seeing the effects of this. That is both in our public works department and GIS. On the public work side, they're seeing an increase in the number of meters they need, trash cans, refuse service as part of the contract we have ongoing. So anything that is an increase in the numbers of single-family residential or commercial, they're seeing the results of that. And then also on the GIS IT side, making sure that we get the mapping and the utility as-built in the system as quickly as possible. Projects are happening so quickly, it's paramount that we're able to map and then do blue stakes so we can see where that, those utilities are. May I have Elmo? There we go. So what I've shown you here is the development revenues that we saw in fiscal year 2018 because the proposal is that the funds will come from the general fund beginning balance. Last year that ended, last fiscal year that ended on June 30th, the development services and engineering departments collected an additional $3.7 million, over and above what was budgeted. This fiscal year, we are on track to bring an additional $2 million if we remain on a straight-line trajectory. But based on our pre-apps and due diligence meetings and the projects currently in the review queue, we anticipate we'll be closer to last year's number of about $3.5 million in projected revenues over and above. I would like to add, and it is important to note, that if development activity decreases for any reason, we will not expend the funds if they are approved this evening. With that said, and in closing, we are requesting funds in the amount of $1,131,200 to be approved for increased development activity in development services, engineering, public works, and information technology services. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And then we also have other staff members from those departments if you have any specific questions. And then also, I'm sure Lori would be happy to jump up and add some information regarding some of the economic development projects that we've been seeing and continue to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Can I have a motion a second to approve budget transfers?
So move.
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from Councilmember Kano. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor?
I just have a quick question, Rebecca. When you said that the front counter helped?
Yes.
Are you anticipating hiring a new person to be on the front counter full-time? Or how would you handle that?
Yeah, right now, we actually have a person who's helping us out 24 hours a week. We would like to extend her to full-time, and she's through a company. So it would just be additional time from her, so an additional 16 hours plus another staff member that we could get from that company as well. It's with processing in and out, issuing single-family residential, just picking up the phone to help people right away, out-processing permits, issuing traffic control. All of that is increasing. And so the numbers we're just seeing are too much for the staff that we have today to handle.
Right. And the staff you have is already trained, and you'll just be extending the hours for that person, right?
Right. Well, she's a part-time person, temporary, extending her hours and then bringing an additional person on as well.
That's great because that front desk is so critical to our public. Thank you.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
I want to make sure I heard it right. The funding was coming from fund balance from '18. It wasn't spent? Excess fund balance?
So I've tapped out my ability to answer this question. I'll hand it over to...
Well, hold on before I get to that question. I really appreciate the stats I received the other day about the excess review processes that went above three. And I really believe that'll play in, especially with the demand for services that you're getting. And I'm really looking forward to staff coming back with how strategically they're going to address trying to get those that are four and five down to three or less. So again, that's the only comments I have made on that because I think that'll help free up some of this time if you're not reviewing stuff four, five, six, or whatever many times. So with that, I'll go back to the budget question.
Sure. And the question is, we are going to be using fiscal year 2019 beginning fund balance to fund these items? They're all one-time items. So beginning fund balance, we had an estimate in the budget. And this is the additional amount that we anticipate in that beginning fund balance due to the numbers that you see right up there.
Yeah, because I would think the beginning fund balance has already been allocated somewhere during the budget process, right? So you can't allocate it twice.
Correct. This is that additional increment that we were not anticipating.
So that was not spent or not allocated?
Correct.
Okay. I just want to make sure because typically, that all gets allocated somewhere.
Correct.
So I just want to make sure it's not allocated twice.
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Councilmember Stepp?
I'm happy that you guys are here getting the extra help that you need. So I want to make sure that that's abundantly clear at the start. The back in '08, development services, engineering, et cetera, were the recipients, if you will, of the largest layoffs that we did. The 27 positions, most of them came out of the development group. At some point, can we get an idea of how many of those positions have been added back? I know unless you're a wizard, you're not going to have it on the top of your head. But I think it would be important for us all to kind of recognize where we were in 2008 as far as development goes and where we are today will help us be in a better framework for position requests that are probably going to come forward next year. And I think it might be a good historical for us. It's not really a question.
Just... Councilmember Kano?
Thank you. Just for clarification, is this expenditure for the end of the, for the end of the fiscal year or the calendar year?
It's for the fiscal year, so for the next eight months until June 30th.
Okay. Thank you. And I, having worked in a municipality, I know the criticality of having efficient customer service because it's one thing to get people interested in your city, but if you can't deliver in a timely manner, you lose your credibility. And so appreciate this.
Thank you. Councilmember Pizzillo, you have another question?
No, just a follow-up. I appreciate your approach on how you're handling it because to get back to the positions, again, as Councilmember Stepp mentioned, it took a major hit when we had the layoffs. But I prefer what you're doing here right now in the one-time contractual because I hate to see, as we get these peaks and valleys with our development, having people laid off as a result that we did not anticipate or whatever. By doing, going about the way you're doing it is if for some reason you don't need it, then since it's contracts, you just don't contract. So the key would be to make sure you get the quality individuals within those contracting positions to make sure the customer service isn't impacted. But I do really appreciate your approach, doing it that way, as opposed to not adding a bunch of people to the staff.
Thank you for being so strategic about your approach to this. And I agree with Bill. I can remember all those layoffs that we had. And that's not fair if we need to bring some new employees back on. So I think the indicator was do not be apprehensive to come forth to ask for permanent position if it's necessary. Did I miss someone over here? I heard a...
Sherry.
Sorry about that. Councilwoman Loretano?
I just want to say thank you for approaching it and getting ahead of the curve because, like you said, we've gotten so many businesses and more in the pipeline. And the last we want to do is get the reputation that we get businesses here and we can't deliver. So I want to thank you. And it seems it was a very comprehensive plan to cover all areas that we are going to need that extra staffing. So it's a good problem to have, you know? And I think it sends the right message to our development community that, no, we are open for business, and we are going to make sure that everything, you know, is done on a timely fashion. So thank you, and thank everyone for bringing it forward.
Councilmember Hampton?
Yeah, I want to echo a few too. So yeah, thank you for bringing this ahead, bringing this to us. I think it's very important that we stay ahead of it, and especially with all the large amount of development. I read the yellow paper. I mean, there's definitely a need, and you have the case here. I have a quick question. So the contracts, are they, is the contract only going to the end of our fiscal year? Or is it contracts, are all the contracts different? Maybe I misread it. But is it a one-year contract, two-year contract, or just up to our fiscal year?
So thank you, Councilmember. We actually hire the staff in different ways. So for building inspections and for the front counter, those are through a company that has staff working for them. And so they actually loan them out to us for an hourly rate. And we typically tell them how long we're going to need them for. And so that, we would say, we will only need them until June 30th. For the civil inspectors, how we've done it so far is we actually put it out through HR, and we put that the position is only for a one-year. When we started in the fiscal year, when we had the three that we do have today, if we add two more, we'll put them in, put it out there, see if we get anybody that would like to take an eight-month position, or we'll reach out to some other firms. That's the tricky part is that we want to make sure that we do get good, quality people. And so we may have to attempt a couple different ways in order to get that person.
Yeah. No, yeah. No, I thank you. I think it's smart to use the contract first and then as we're building the case for the permanent positions because, like I said, I don't want to have to, another, I don't have to lay anybody off.
Absolutely.
So the contract is the way to go. So at least then justify it. And then as we keep seeing more and more that we can move over permanently. So yeah, thank you for bringing it up. And yeah, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Stepp?
Thanks. I leaned over to Councilwoman Pizzillo. And I think we have to, we have to be very careful with this, though. If we've established an expectation in the development community of a three-day turnaround or a five-day turnaround when the rest of our partners in the valley, if you will, are at seven days, 21 days, et cetera, that we're not over-staffing to meet... You know, if we came through at seven days, we still might look like heroes. So I think we have to be very careful about the expectation that we've set and making sure that we're not over-staffing to meet an unrealistic expectation in the building community, if you will. So seeing some benchmarks from what else is happening in the valley. I think in, you know, most of the time, we say, geez, we don't want to be the number one in highest sales tax and the highest property rate. But in this case, we want to be, we want to be the number one with the lowest turnaround time. But let's make sure that we're not so low that we have to super-staff to make that happen. And I think that'll be an important follow-up to this. And a side note, we do have an engineering firm right here in our own city that might be helpful. Let's take care of our local businesses.
Thank you, Councilmember. And I appreciate that. And if I could just add that 15-day turnaround is our typical, which is 15 business days, so three weeks. We're right now pushing 16 and 17. So we're really wanting to keep down around the 14, 15 days. So that's what we're going to attempt to do.
Of course, it's very difficult when you try to balance this out because we have the land, we have the infrastructure, which many of the cities, our surrounding cities, do not have. So not to help them, I don't think we could do that. I think spacing this out is going to be difficult.[1731.81] There's not, I don't think it's any easy way to look at it. I think we need to do checks, like you say, to know the numbers and all of that, but certainly we want them in our city. It's bottom line. All right, let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Post, the ayes have it. Thank you very much. Seven, the next item is 7.2, approved resolution 2018-1916, approving a development agreement for Center Point of Goodyear. Sarah, yes. Oh, you had your hair a little bit different. I thought you were someone else. Sarah Chilton, Assistant City Attorney, to present. Sarah?
Mayor Lord, Vice Mayor Campbell, councilmembers.
You're going to have to pull that closer.
Well, I...
Yeah, thank you.
Poller? Okay.
Great.
I'm here with a development agreement for the Center Point Development, Development. That is the property where we are located. We were part of the original Center Point Development. At that time, it was known as Quantum Corporate Center. The development agreement is pretty self-explanatory. There was only three items. Originally, it started as, well, originally started as an economic incentive development agreement, but things changed, and so we continued along the path that we had been working with on the property owner's part. We treated it as an amendment, even though it's coming forward as a separate agreement, because it really is just tinkering with some existing obligations. So the development agreement does three things that we're bringing forward. It terminates the Quantum Corporate Center Development Agreement as to this property, and that was related to, the primary obligation under that development agreement was to dedicate property for a well site, well, to dedicate a well and a property for a storage tank site. And Public Works had informed us that we no longer needed that property as part of ours water and wastewater system, so there was no reason for that property to be encumbered, and they wanted to move forward with development of that piece of property. The other point in the development agreement is it clarifies how much is owed under the Van Buren Cost Recovery Obligation. That's been outstanding. So it basically establishes the reimbursement amount that is owed for that property and provides for the payment of the reimbursement within 10 days of recordation of this development agreement. So that was something that was great. It's going to end up with over $700,000 coming back to the city for that reimbursement. We had done that. I think we finished it in 2006. And the last point that they had wanted, that the property owner wanted, was they wanted some flexibility with developing, I think it was 143rd Avenue. They did not want to have to develop, oh, I'm sorry, Harrison Street. They didn't want to have to develop Harrison Street as a minor collector through the entire property, because the plans they have, it would interfere with, with the development. Staff was supportive of that. We don't have to maintain it if we don't own it. So, you know, we didn't have any real keen interest in necessarily owning a roadway that no one wanted, and that wasn't needed. The development agreement does provide for the flexibility, but it'll, it requires that access be provided to any of the affected properties that are, that are created in that. And as long as there's cooperation with all of the affected properties, having a private street or having a private accessway is fine with the city. The city will get the necessary easements that it want, that it needs for emergency access and for governmental services, but other than that, we had no interest in requiring, just for the sake of requiring, that Harrison Street go through. So that was, it's pretty simple. There's just not much to it. It's probably one of the easier ones I worked on.
Thank you, Sarah. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Will the city clerk please read Resolution 2018-1916 by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1916, approving development agreement for Center Point of Goodyear, directing the city manager to execute the development agreement for Center Point of Goodyear, authorizing and directing actions and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to adopt Resolution 2018-1916?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilmember Stip.
Second.
A second from Councilwoman Pizzillo. Open for council discussion. Yes, Councilwoman Pizzillo?
Just clarification, Sarah. The reason why we're not charging the development fee for billing is because this is an amendment to a prior one, or?
Well, we did charge the amendment fee, but we looked at this as more of an amendment. To go in and try to amend the existing agreement would have been overly cumbersome, because it's been split with so many different property owners. So from an administrative standpoint, it was a lot easier to terminate that agreement and then just start a new one, but it, you know, it was such a simple, little agreement in terms of what it was accomplished, and we could have accomplished it at a lot more effort on the part of staff and a lot more administrative burden, so we collected the fee for the amendment.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell? Aye. Councilmember Loretano? Aye. Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you very much, Sarah. Well, we got here pretty quickly, and we're just going to go through some things, and then we'll have a special meeting afterwards. But now is the time for any reports from the city council? Any events you've been to, anything you want to talk about? Yes, Councilwoman Pizzillo?
Well, I was able to stop into the, I guess, the art in the park this weekend, and very creative young people drawing, you know, up there on the stage piece. Saw some really interesting draws, and actually saw some really great art that was actually in the parks and paintings. So again, nice event. Also, kind of a sad event, I guess a few of us were at Bill Arnold's celebration of life this, this past weekend, and yeah, I remember Bill when he was, as mayor, when I was on staff at that time, and we go, we go way, way, way back, and used to help him with the Boys and Girls Club, put that together, and surely going to miss, surely going to miss Bill.
Thank you. Any other? Yeah. Councilman Hampton?
I got to go part of the day to the GAIN event with the mayor and run around. I thought that was a good, good experience. Need to see all the residents out and about and enjoying their neighbors, enjoying the community, and utilizing the different parks in the community as well. I thought it was a good opportunity to meet residents and let them know we're here, and yeah, see that they enjoy the community, and thank you to the police and fire for going out and adding a lot to that, those events as well. So it was good. Thank you.
Anybody else? Vice Mayor?
On Saturday, the 3rd of November, the Pebble Creek Community held their annual, 26th Annual Pebble Creek Home. Oh, thank you, Georgia, for buying a ticket. Yay. Our 22nd Annual Home Tour with all proceeds going to the Goodyear Police Department shop with a cop. And this is an annual event that we have, we've put together. There's a committee of four of us, and we have approximately 150 volunteers that step in and help us put the tour on, and I'll give you a final count in a week. We're still counting the proceeds, but it was very successful, and it was our pleasure to be able to do it again for the city.
Well, I also attended Bill's celebration, and you know, he was an eight-year mayor, and it was interesting, because they had people at the celebration that knew him, were on the, were either on the council or in staff. A lot of staff members were there, and he was really instrumental in a lot of the buildings that are up now in Goodyear. He was a quiet and well-spoken man, and we had been out to dinner with him just a week ago or two weeks, and, and so, but it was a very, it was a very loving and respectful event, and I couldn't get over the number of people that stood up and spoke about him, and had some very nice stories. Even Councilwoman Pizzillo spoke up about a golf game that he still remembers. So it was, it was very well done. I did run, I did attend the Raceway for a group called Playworks, and they do this every year at the Raceway. All right, I'm having a moment. What is it? IMS. Yes, Raceway, which you have to see. Oh my goodness, they've made some absolutely beautiful improvements over there. So it might be nice if they invite us over for a race one time, we could all go to it. So I'll leave that up to the city manager to see if you could do that.
Do you want? How come?
So, and I thought the GAIN event was very well done. I thought the people love to see our police department, police and fire. They had big attraction, and, and it was really nice. And again, I was telling the city manager today, I was at so many events, I was out at seven and didn't get home till late. I was at three or four, four events on this weekend on one day, but everywhere I went, I didn't get any negativity. I got just, wow, what your city's doing. I had to call the staff and ask them something. I had to do this. I sensed something, how respectful you are and how you are so open to us and responsive to us. So I'd like you, council, as you, as you hear those comments, bring them to the council, and because you, you can get one negative person, and then the city stinks, you know, but I haven't had one of those in a long time. It just keeps getting bigger and better of people who love living here. And I even met a mayor who, his girlfriend now lives here at Liv, where you live. Yes. So anyway, you can see it just, yeah, it's that entertainment room they have. Okay, so let's go on to the city manager. You have anything to report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. I wanted to recap yet another event. Goodyear hosted the Fall Household Hazardous Waste Event for the Southwest Valley Cities on November 3rd. We had 465 cars come through the event. 322 of those were Goodyear residents.
That's good to hear.
There were no traffic issues, and the average wait time was only 10 minutes, and we wanted to give a special thanks to our sanitation division with support from fleet, streets, parks, police, and the volunteers and police services for hosting this well-organized event, which was received well by all of those who participated. Just a note that tomorrow is election day, and City Hall has been used as an early voting site starting last week, and tomorrow will be a polling place from 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. And then, last but not least, city offices will be closed in honor of Veterans Day on Monday, November 12th, and because we won't have a council meeting beforehand, also a notice that city offices will be closed for Thanksgiving on Thursday, November 22nd, and also November 23rd. Thank you.
That's great. Didn't compliment the in-focus. How'd you like the in-focus? With the general picture on, the big F-35 on the cover?
Haven't read it yet.
You haven't read it yet?
I just got back this afternoon.
My goodness. Well, anyway, do read it. It's got lots of great information, and it also tells you the value of having Luke Air Force Base in our, in our area, so. Okay, the next meeting will be a work session on November 26th at 5:00 p.m., followed by a regular meeting at 6:00. Yes?
Mayor, I think some, I'm just making sure that folks that have just walked in are not here for the cert recognition. Okay.
No. City manager is definitely saying no.
I just wanted to make sure.
Thank you for being so observant. Okay, so no further business. We're going to adjourn this, and then we're going to go into our special meeting. All right? This meeting is adjourned, and I'll call to order the special meeting, November 5th, 2018, 6:05. We are all present. Council, upon roll call, we're going to convene into an executive...